Good evening. Today is Wednesday, April 17th. And I would like to call this scheduled meeting with Burkittan zoning board of appeals to order. Although I'll note for the record that all board members present at the time. I'd like to read our zoning board of appeals chairman's preamble before every meeting, so everyone in attendance understands. Can you hear me now?
I was just working on my work.
Alright, you gotta get it right on.
Working with you has been a bit too good.
Alright, can you hear me now? Okay. This is the preamble of the zoning board of appeals, just to let everyone in attendance know what our duties are as the zoning board to understand how the process works. But the zoning board of appeals is charged with the responsibility of granting variances and ordinance requirements after determining whether there exists an undue hardship upon an applicant if a variance is not granted. In determining whether or not to grant a variance, the board shall apply the criteria specified in section 27-916 of the zoning ordinance to the facts of each case. The board further hears applications where it is alleged that an administrative official erred on a final order requirement or decision based on or made in the enforcement of the zoning ordinance. The zoning board of appeals does not create zoning, nor can it change zoning. The board has no authority to grant variances for use, density, or height. Matters brought before the zoning board of appeals are to be concerned only with the variances from development standards placed on property by the zoning ordinance. Final decisions of the zoning board of appeals may be appealed by petitioning the Superior Court of DeKalb County within 30 days after the decision is reached. Alright, so our first, our next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. And we have two sets of minutes to approve tonight. The first ones are from our special called meeting on March 4th, 2013. That's the one with the correction?
Yes.
How do we just discuss the corrections we see with you on these minutes?
Or amongst yourself?
Okay. On the minutes from the specially called meeting, our first meeting we had, on the last page of the minutes, I noticed two errors on there. About halfway down the page, it says, "Don Woodley explained why he was in favor. It was a straightforward request, they just want a shorter building." And that was actually Don Bolia that stated that. And then a little bit further down that same page, as to the vote, the motion to deny, it says, "The motion to deny passed unanimously." And it actually, the motion to deny passed 4 to 2. Mr. Bergsley was recused from that vote, and Don Bolia and myself voted against the motion to deny the variance. The other four board members voted to deny the variance. Does anyone else have any comments on the minutes from the March 4th meeting?
I really have to work out here.
Alright. Okay. Does anyone else have any comments on the meeting minutes from the March 4th meeting? No? Do we need to vote these in?
I do. We adopt them as amended, or approve them as amended.
I second.
Alright. The motion is to adopt the minutes as amended. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, the minutes from the first meeting are approved. Now we need to adopt the minutes from the March 20th regular meeting, 2013. Any discussion or comments on those minutes? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So, ma'am.
And a second?
I second.
Alright, all those in favor approving the minutes from the regular March 20th meeting, signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright. Do we have any organizational or procedural items this evening? Mr. Bergsley, I guess you have one?
Yeah, I guess you would call it procedural. I am going to recuse myself on the last four items, the applications 48 through, well, let's see, 48, 49, 4A, and 4D, items 8 through 10, 11 on the agenda. I've been legal counsel at F's Heritage Investments for seven, eight years, so I must step out on that one.
Okay. Any other organizational or procedural items? Any unfinished business? Alright. So, we'll move forward into new business. We'll start with our first case of the evening, which is ZBA 13-041. Ted Sandler of the Ted Sandler Law Group located at 6400 Powers Ferry Road, Atlanta, Georgia, 30339 is representing Wilkinson Continental LLC, the owner of the subject property 1322 and 1355 Briarwood Road, Atlanta, Georgia, 30319, for the following. A variance to 27-356B1B to reduce a side yard setback from 50 feet to 27 feet, and a variance to 27-358 to reduce a transitional buffer between dissimilar districts from 50 feet to 27 feet. Can we get the staff to give the board a summary of the staff memo included in our packets?
Mr. Chair, the request, as you stated, is to reduce a side yard setback and a transitional buffer to permit the apartment complex located at 1322 Briarwood Road to transfer land from their own property to an adjacent neighbor that fronts on Telford Drive. You can read the staff report that we put together, and for the reason and the nature of why they need the variance, but what this will end up doing is allowing a transfer of property and remove the property line for the Telford Drive property and the apartment complex. Our recommendation is that you view the application favorably, and further, we would appreciate if approved that you were to approve it with the staff conditions that we placed at the end of the staff memo.
Okay. Since this is a public hearing, I now open the public hearing portion and open a 10-minute period for when... I need to have Mr. Sandler, please, come up and speak.
We got a telephone call today. Mr. Sandler actually had a family emergency, he would not be able to attend. He has sent someone in his stead.
Yes, I'm playing Cole with Harp and Simons. And we represent Wilkinson as well, and Ted's actually in our building.
Can you pull that out of the stand and go ahead and talk into that?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
So, I apologize. I'm prepared, but I didn't see this part thoroughly this week either, but I think it's pretty straightforward. And the only thing I add that I would note is, Telford Drive is a head-in, and the shaded area is approximately the area that's going to be due to Ms. Wilma Roberts, who is the adjacent owner. The fence that is there has been there since the 70s, so apparently this has been a matter of confusion for a long time. It wasn't until my client bought it and realized it, and to sell it became a title issue, so that's the primary reason to do this. So, we didn't sell it, we complained with Ms. Roberts, and I believe Ms. Roberts provided a letter, which I hope is in our package or not, that said she could not object to the variance, and obviously, she's making a personal benefit. The other thing I'd point out is, there is no intention to do new buildings or new construction or anything of that nature. There's no singular purpose for the Wilkinson properties to acquire the property. It's just rather to solve the lawsuit and to...
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the variance? In attendance? Is there anyone who is opposed to the variance that would like to speak? Okay. Please, please go forth.
On this particular case, I'm with the board, yes. I'm just trying to reunite the conditions that you suggested this staff had listed, conditions on their recommendations, not just these public, I want to reunite those conditions.
Certainly. Alright.
Yeah, go ahead. The first condition reads, "Approval of the setback buffer yard variance as requested and solely adjacent to Lot 1 within Briarwood Hills subdivision Block C as shown on the survey entitled Wilkinson Real Estate LLC and Chicago Title Insurance Company dated January 27, 2012." Second condition reads, "A subdivision plat should be submitted to the city for a recording in DeKalb County records so that the new parcel boundaries are correctly identified and associated with respective tax parcel identification numbers."
Okay. Did that respond?
Thank you.
Alright. Would you like to step forward, please?
Yes.
Please state your name, I'm sorry, I would like to ask the gentleman there.
I'm Angela Legregat, and I'm one of the property owners on Barrow Hills. Mine is number 10. It's not shown on that one, but it's shown on the, you know, prior, the next slide. And my question is, I have a clarification question. I'm wondering if these reductions are approved, if they will apply to all four sides, or is that one side of the property? I'm on the east side of that property, and I'm number 10. And I wasn't able to tell from the picture whether those dotted lines are the, where they are now, or where the proposed boundary is. But if it just, my thought is, if this only applies to that one disputed property, I have no problem, but if all, because it would open up the potential for all of the surrounding areas to be reduced, for me and my neighbors, that would be a problem. And mine is already having issues trying to resolve this property with the ones, probably as they are.
And it is, if you could just please...
Yeah, that first condition read that if approved, and this approval is relevant to the variance as requested and solely adjacent to Lot 1 within Briarwood Hills subdivision Block C.
So, it has nothing to do with the...
The only setback that's allowable is the one that's right next to the last lot on the left, the westernmost line on the north side of Telford Drive.
So, it wouldn't set a precedent for...
Correct.
Howard, should we point out what we discussed earlier, the diagonal line at the corner that is not the entire shaded area now?
Correct. As it's been described to us, the transfer of land does not incorporate everything that's inside of that shaded area. Instead, it incorporates the land, the line that's punctuated with the X's on that survey represents a fence, and it's our understanding that it's the land that's inside that fence that moves towards the east.
Okay.
Essentially, that fence line will become the new property line.
An applicant confirm that, please?
Yes, that is, that is the case.
Okay, thank you. Alright, is there anyone else who would like to speak against the variance? Alright. We will now close the public hearing portion of the meeting and go into board discussion on the top. Okay, go ahead.
As the applicant stated, there was a letter that was sent to us, that was sent to staff in support, and it reads, "It's from Cannon, I guess My Hill and Winkles LLC. It's addressed to me and Mr. Ken, and it reads, 'Please be advised that this law firm represents Ms. Wilma Roberts, the owner of the property located at 1332 Telford Drive, Atlanta, Georgia, 30319. Ms. Roberts's property is immediately adjacent to the subject property, and the variances requested are for that portion of the Wilkinson property that abuts Ms. Roberts's property. We have discussed this variance request at length with the applicant and support the city approving the variances as requested. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to contact me directly. Signed, William E. Ken III.'"
Okay, thank you. Alright, well, I welcome any board comments or a motion.
I move we approve the variances with the two conditions that staff had recommended.
I second.
Alright, so, the motion is the chair understands it is to approve item number ZBA 13-041 with the conditions, the recommendations by staff, both recommendations number 1 and 2. Alright, so, all those in favor of the approval of the variance signify by raising your hand and saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the variance passes unanimously. Alright, item number 2, which is ZBA 13-042. Sean Cash of 4510 Yuka Road, Atlanta, Georgia, 30342 seeks the following. A variance to 27-788A to reduce an average front yard setback from 71.8 feet to 45 feet at a property located at 4142 Shawnee Lane. 35 feet, excuse me. Sorry about that. Alright, so, if we could get the staff opinion on the variance?
Yeah, the request is to reduce a front yard setback for construction of a new home at 4142 Shawnee Lane. There's a requirement in the city of Burkittan that when a home is built on a block that has developed 60% or more of the plots on the block in existence, that the setbacks for the neighboring homes, the average of the setbacks in the neighboring homes within 75 feet of the side lot lines of the subject property, become the front yard setback for the property in question. In this instance, the average of those neighboring properties comes out to 71.8 feet. In this instance, Mr. Cash, the applicant, wishes to demolish the existing home and build a new home, and instead, we'd like to pull the front of that home forward to a point that, I believe you stated 35 feet, and there have been some discrepancies, but the application is actually for 45 feet. The district standard in R100 is for 35 feet, but the applicant seeks to be able to place that number in, within 45 feet of the front yard property line. So, staff recommends that you view the application favorably, and further, if approved, would recommend that you approve such with the conditions that staff has printed at the end of the staff report. I can read those if you'd like. Development of the lot shall occur in substantial accordance with the site plan submitted to the community development department attached to this application, prepared by Gaby Survey and Design dated February 19, 2013. Number 2 is the granting of this variance is to accomplish the completion of the proposed new home depicted in the attached development plans, and is not to be considered a blanket variance to any and all future construction on the property.
So, the agenda is incorrect, and it's 45 feet, so...
That is correct.
Tim was actually right when he... Alright, I'll now open the public hearing portion in a 10-minute period for comments in favor of the application. Mr. Cash? Okay. Please go ahead.
My name is Sean Cash, I'm the applicant.
You're gonna have to hold the microphone. Pretty much put it in your mouth, you people build it in.
Just don't ask me to say.
Alright.
As Mr. Cole said, we are asking for a reduction of the 71.8 foot front yard setback to 45 feet, not 35 feet, due to the, well, there are many reasons. It would create such a small buildable area within the property. Also, the topography, I believe, on the east side, sloping down towards the rear of the lot, is making us push it forward towards the thinner portion of the property. Also, the curve in the street pushes back the buildable area closer, it makes it thinner towards the center. There are many similar homes to what we're proposing in the area, and we believe that this would not cause any hardship to the neighbors, not constitute a special privilege or be inconsistent with limitations of other properties within the zoning district in our opinion. We also believe that this request is consistent with the intent and purpose of the city of Burkittan comprehensive plan, and will protect against polite depreciation in that regard.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak in favor of the application?
From Gaby Survey and Design, we did the site plan for this particular piece of property. I'd just like to add that the size of this house is in conformance with the other characters of the houses surrounding this area. This is the minimal amount of front yard reduction to be able to put that house home. You'll notice the garage is very close to the rear setback. If I had to tilt the house further to get it away from the street, the house would not be perpendicular to Shawnee Lane, the house would not be perpendicular to Shawnee Lane, it would not look the same for prison.
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of the application? Alright, I'll now open a 10-minute period for anyone who would like to, who is opposed to the application.
Hi, this is Bob Crochet, speaking on behalf of the family. I want to read you a letter from Larry Beckwith, who's the owner of that small house at the very bottom of the picture, that's basically being squeezed back and away visually because of this large massive structure that they've built next door. He writes this letter, and he gives it to me because he's in Nevada right now, our business. There's no way that you could get here in time for this meeting. This email will serve as my signature against the variance, as I am out of town to attend the meeting. I am completely opposed to this variance, as it will greatly diminish the value of our property now and the future of our device. This variance should be denied. The requested changes will severely impact the quality of view from our front porch, from the carport, our street appeal view to our property, to the views of others from the surrounding subdivision. They will adversely affect the future overall development of the subdivision, as other property owners will seek similar requests that will also diminish. Residential property development should not be granted variances of this magnitude to restrictions that have been long established and maintain the value of each of the lots based on these original restrictions. These restrictions have been part of this neighborhood since it was established in 1954. We have lived by them, our neighbors have lived by them. The builder should not have, and would not have, no disinformation prior to purchasing this lot. We respectfully request, and he's talking about him on behalf of his wife, that this variance be denied, and the builder develop property with a dwelling that conforms and meets these restrictions summarily. He's saying that he wants to enforce the law as it stands, his neighborhood does not need 45-foot setbacks. Now, the setback request here is not minimal. It's a 78.1 foot existing setback. He's looking for 45 feet. That's a substantial reduction. It's a reduction of 26.8 feet, it's a 37% decrease. That house was substantially moved towards the road. You cannot see it from that drawing right there, but the side plane of the house which faces the property that these good folks live in, is nothing but a tall, three-story plate wall. The original line of that house is about 35 feet in the air. It's two stories of living space, it's got a downstairs basement, which is addition to the square footage stadium. It also has an attic, which is extremely high. Alright. What it does is it prominently overwhelms the neighboring property. It aesthetically displaces the neighboring property by shutting it to the rear visually, and severely restricts the quiet enjoyment of people who live there now. Teresa, her husband, and of course, Father Law. All of these are viable factors, which are considered by any potential buyer down the line who would want to purchase their property. Now, here's the thing. We have a developer who's coming in, and he's obviously gonna make money off this house. He's gonna do it, and we don't have any problem with anybody making money in this world. This is America. You can capitalize and you can make a profit. I'm all for it. But in terms of this situation, not only will they make a profit, these people will lose severely. I can assure you, the little house they live in is 2,200 square feet. They've lived there for over 25 years. This gentleman's coming in, he's new to the neighborhood, he has no concept of what he's doing here in terms of how he's gonna affect their property. I back up these people, because I'm a personal friend of theirs and have known them for years. Larry Beckwith is a very close personal friend of mine. He asked me, called me, begged me to be here tonight on his behalf, so I'm here. I can promise you that his point is exact. The building setback lines in the neighborhood should be maintained as they are, or that particular structure either needs to be redesigned, or reduced severely, or moved back to their property. That's what I said, I'll add to that.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Teresa Hotard Becker, and I'm the small house, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Next to it. I'm not very good at drawing, but I drew some dimensions. There have been, on our street near our house, three other large homes. They were wonderfully built. They were built by John Willis. He took into consideration all the smaller houses by us. All the fronts of the houses meet, even the big ones to the small ones, so there's no divisions, it looks like the same neighborhood. The house that this man wants to build, he wants to bring it forward, unlike all the other houses. I know the guy that's gonna be building it did help with the other two houses for Don Willis. He knows, he's seen this street. What I have here, it'll show you the fronts of all the houses. They all match, except for two houses where the garage has come out. The red houses are the new John Willis homes. They look wonderful on our street. We're not objecting to new homes on our street. We're objecting to someone coming into our street, into our neighborhood, taking a variance and bringing it forward. It doesn't go, it doesn't conform to the other homes that John Willis made. I don't know who this Mr. Acock is, it's a different design. They do not have to put a design like this. You said in the beginning of your speech, that is a hardship for the person asking for the variance. Well, it is a hardship for me, it's a hardship for our family. This is, I am the first resident of this neighborhood in 1954. This is my father, he's 96 years old. He owns the first house. I moved there 20-plus years ago when I got married. And we bought this property knowing it was a great property. And you're asking, you're allowing this person or this company to bring that site forward. It diminishes the value of our property, it's gonna diminish just everything for us, and it will look like we're gonna live in a cave. And there's no reason, let me tell you one thing about John Willis. When they built the property to our left, his name was John Z, was the builder. He brought me three plans, and he said to me, "Which of these plans would you like us to build on this property, and why?" And I gave my opinions. He said, "I can't promise you I will build that house, but at least I will think about it." He went away and had three plans to show us. This builder has one plan, I know there are more. He does not have to build that property, or that house, or that property. It's amazing, if you could see the street, the beautiful homes that are there, I'm not saying you cannot build one, because they do not have to build this house in that position and that close to the street. It does not conform to the rest of the street. That's all I have to say. My name is Teresa Hotard Becker.
Ms. Becker, just the diagram that you have, is your home, the one...
This is my home.
Okay, that's my thought, alright.
Every front of their house, even the tall one, the red one, for John Willis', they all conform all the way across, except these two garages, which they made match. This is the house wanting to be built. He wants to bring it towards this position, I guess where the garages are. He wants to bring it forward to this position, I guess where the garages are. This is the house that I'm building. I don't think it's very real. This is our house. That John Willis put into consideration, he puts his properties there. He would say all match, this one, all match, all the way down. This one, all right. These two, the properties they're saying have that big, they put two pools in. There's a backyard, they don't have no pool. It's a great property to have to me. It's not bad at all. And I can hear right there. So if you're going to, which is going to support you? You say it's a hardship, it would be a hardship for us. And they know, when builders come to the neighborhood, they know all of the setbacks, they know all of the rules, and they still buy their property. They know where they can put their property and they try to stretch it. They don't buy their property. They bought for $180,000, which is, that's a great price. Most houses, they work on two hundred bucks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. How are we going to come up? Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the variance? Go ahead, sir. We've got a little bit of time.
My name is Bob Ness. I'm working with the Department of Sports back. I'm also a visitor of those prehousing neighborhoods and I'm a student and I did on it. I paid $1,000 for my lot.
I paid $1,000 for my lot and I really took it down and I respect the setbacks and I'm a developer too. I think I like the neighborhood and I wouldn't even think about asking you to buy the house to ask me to move it. It's way too much. It's way too much. I'm a developer, I'm still a resident, so I don't think it's bad.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did we have a balance of the time for the application? Mr. Cash, if you cared to rebut any of the comments?
We have four.
Okay. Mr. Cash, if there's anything you'd like to say towards those comments?
Took me by surprise, obviously. We, of course, would love to work with the neighbors and try to keep everybody happy. If you look at the current house, that bright orange part is the buildable area that we have right now. Do you see that on the lot? I mean, it's...
Could you step forward, please?
That's the existing house right now, which is currently in construction, is the buildable area. That's in the green yellow. The orange part is our buildable area. And as you can see, the house that she lives in is only 60 feet from the right way. Every house is ahead of the 71.3. Well, this one's eight, that's why the average is out to be what it is. And then with the topography in the back, so we tried to move this way, we actually moved further away from her house. Let me take...
You can put down the mic when you're at this close to so getting to them.
And here, you know, in regular R100 zoning, the setback would be 35 feet. So not only are we 10 feet beyond that, but this is just an unheated area. That's a porch, so that's probably like another five, 10 feet right there. Not sure exactly. I'm just trying to figure out where on this lot we can put this with the curve of the street and try to pull away from their house because it does drop off in the back. I do have photos of that on the record board. Now, on the other side of their house is a similar house to what we're trying to build. I do understand, you don't want to be surrounded by these other houses, but in the neighborhood, older ranch-style houses, you know, there can be one-story newer houses. The city of Brookhaven, of course, is a more, you know, it's a very desirable area to live in and people want larger houses, they want to build the houses, you know, which will include basement depending on the topography of the property, which does flow this way, which will make it look better towards their house. But as I said, we're trying to move further away from the house that's going to be there. We did try to contact John Donnarumma, we picked up copies. I believe left off some sets of our plans, have never heard back. We do have sign-offs from neighbor right here. We have a neighbor on the side, we have a neighbor in the rear. Only ones we don't have is the Beckwith and there was another one over here, which was another couple's and they didn't propose anything.
I apologize. You all smell gas, there's a gas leak by safety markets and B1. So if you all gas, if you all smell gas, that's where the gas leak is, so we're going to be alarmed, you know, because we apologize for any...
Thank you for letting us know.
I appreciate that. Other than that, I mean, that's where we are right now. We want to work with the neighbors.
Let me see the first drawing, please. You're saying the orange is the buildable area that's, if they follow the current setback?
Right.
And that's further back than the opponents? Is the opposition, folks, are on which side?
They are. The opposition is...
No, I believe it's the one next door.
Yeah, there's 60 feet from the right way and then we got 83 on this side, which makes us at 71.8 instead of, you know, normal 35 if you have an R100. That's the current house, which as you see, and here's the, this is proposed. So we'll be moving, I can figure out...
Explain that to these folks over here. I mean, it looks like the current setback would require this lot to be, the house to be built even further back in the street than theirs.
Well, we would be 45 feet if you include a unheated porch. There's 60.7 feet and that's from the right way, not the actual street. So if you look at it, the way it curves, we kind of, let's look at this one. Here's their house and with the curve, we kind of match up with it. And then maybe setback further to the house on this side, you know, we would be, we'd be jetting forward in front of the 83 feet away from the right way. You know, we'd kind of put, we'd kind of be even with that. You know, I don't think that we, I believe we wouldn't be, you know, jetting out forward and living in a cave.
Mr. Cash, are you going to be the resident of the home?
Okay.
I can jet forward.
Sure. Sure. All right. I will go ahead and close the public hearing related to this item and welcome any board comments or motion on the item.
I have a question, Tamar Howard. In a situation like this, where we're talking about the average setbacks for a development or neighborhood that's over 60% developed and we go with the average, what takes precedence? The average or the code?
That is the code. You mean the district standard or the average standard?
Right.
The average.
Okay.
If the average is more restrictive than the average controls, if the district is more restrictive than the district controls.
Is it the average of just the two houses on either side?
It's the average of any structure within 75 feet of the side lot lines. So essentially, in this district, yes, it's just the houses on either side on the same
Okay. My general impression is twofold. Number one, the buildable area that he described, that he showed in orange, does seem overly restrictive to me. So this lot is being pressed on the front by the curb, being pressed on the back by that inset angle. So there is a bit of a lot hardship, it seems to me now. I'd also parent that the property owner and the neighbor have not talked, have not met, not tried to work out some sort of compromise. So I'm not making a motion yet, but I'd be inclined to defer this and give them a chance to try to make some kind of compromise.
I agree with Mr. Beardsley. I'd like to see some more involvement with the neighbor, see if they can come up with some options that might be more agreeable.
My comments on the parcel are, I too would like to see some, maybe some dialogue between the adjacent owners and the property owner with the, I guess, with the understanding of the adjacent property owners that this is what we're tasked to do, is to, you know, grant variances based on exceptional conditions. And I understand that you can purchase a lot and you can look at it in advance. My opinion is kind of along the lines of Mr. Beardsley's, though, is there are some exceptional circumstances with this lot. With it being in a curve in the road like that and having the center pin which pinches down that rear line as well, there's not, in my opinion, enough buildable area on the lot within the 71-foot setback. So, you know, would either party be opposed to a deferral for 30 days to discuss that with each other or particularly since the owners of the, you know, your husband is out of town?
We could defer for 30 days. We'd rather not.
We could do that. We don't mind going back in that room and discussing right now, see if we can get at least closing.
Do we need a moderator back there?
I don't have a problem with that. Actually, there's a table.
Close the door.
You can.
Close the door, yeah.
Can we table this item to be brought up again later in the agenda? Does that be okay with you, sir?
Absolutely.
We'll put you on the back. Somebody like to motion to table this?
I'll move that we table this item till the end of the meeting and... Well, actually, I would like to put them on after 46 and before...
About 47.
After 47. After 47, right.
Right.
Before 48.
That's my motion. All right. You have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, taking five by rating here and saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes. All right. The next item on the agenda is ZBA case number 13-043. Frank Gaddy of Gaddy Survey and Design located at 1215 Pleasant Hill Road, Lawrenceville, Georgia 30044, representing the Patels. Owners seek the following: A variance to 27-189 to increase the maximum allowable lot coverage of an R75 lot from 35% to 47% at a property located at 1103 Mendel Circle. Let's go ahead and open up the public comment. Mr. Gaddy, if you'd like to start?
Staff report.
I'm sorry. Staff report. Sorry, I didn't mean to skip.
This request is to allow an increase in maximum allowable lot coverage, otherwise known as impervious surface, from the district maximum of 35% to a requested 47% for a home that's already been constructed on Mendel Circle on a block that consists of homes which are largely also non-conforming for their amount of impervious surface that's allowable or that has been constructed on the lot. The staff report talks about the technical issues involved, but ultimately, the staff has found the application should be viewed favorably and further would suggest that if it were to be approved by the board this evening, that it be approved with the staff conditions of, number one, the project be completed in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan documents dated February 26, 2013, prepared by Gaddy Survey and Design. Additionally, appropriate stormwater mitigation measures should be installed, excuse me, will be installed, consistent with the improvements indicated on the supplied site plan.
Okay. And with your second recommendation there, are you suggesting that those would be inspected by DeKalb County still or would you want the City of Brookhaven to inspect those stormwater measures?
No, I think the City of Dunwoody needs to go out there and make sure that they've been installed.
City of Brookhaven?
Yes. The City of Brookhaven needs to go.
It's your old job.
Yeah, I know. Old habits. Four years forward. Yeah, I think it's important that the City of Brookhaven actually go out there and make sure that they've been installed for the reasons which are delineated in the staff report.
Okay. All right. Well, let's go ahead and open up the public comment. Mr. Gaddy, if you'd like to do it?
My name is Frank Gaddy of Gaddy Survey and Design. We design and survey this property. Billie Department was issued for this lot in October 2012 by DeKalb County. The project's located in the Linwood Park blanket variance area, which was issued by the old DeKalb County Board of Adjustments in June 1967. The Board of Adjustments recognized the need to reduce distances between buildings and the front yard setback due to the substandard lot sizes that existed in the neighborhood. Lot coverage was not a code requirement at that time of the issuance of the blanket variance. Of the 21 lots in the immediate area, three are vacant and 14 are currently non-conforming with respect to lot coverage. The lots vary in lot coverage with a maximum lot coverage up to 52%. Therefore, we felt like an increase from 35 to 47 is in character with the surrounding homes. I have designed the water quality for all the impervious surfaces on this lot and part of the DeKalb County requirements is that I certify that to the county and we do not get our certificate of occupancy through them without that sign-off and inspection. I have no problem calling the City of Brookhaven inspector, we know. But this process, this particular lot, because it's a permit position in DeKalb, CO will issue through DeKalb. I'll have to modify the site plan to show the increased impervious area and water quality. We'll have to increase, we'll have to revise the site plan to show what y'all see and before we can get our certificate of occupancy and we'll also have to provide proof to DeKalb County that a variance was issued. But we have designed water quality for all the impervious surfaces on the lot. The site plan submitted to DeKalb County wasn't in compliance with lot coverage. However, it's not our client's preference to install a gravel driveway. If the variance is denied, we'll be enforced to install a gravel concrete driveway apron at the street and a small concrete pad in front of the garage and connect those two surfaces with a gravel driveway. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them for you.
Okay. Does anyone else would like to speak in favor of the application? All right. We'll now have 10 minutes for anyone who is opposed to the application that would like to speak. All right. Seeing as how we have none, I'll go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting and open it up to the board for discussion or motion.
Mr. Gaddy, what are the flow wells shown on the plaque?
It's an infiltration well. It's a high-density polyethylene container that's in the middle that's perforated. We surround that with eight-foot of gravel, two-foot gravel underneath it, so it will catch the volume of that area between the inside of the container and the voids between the rocks will contain the first 1.2 inches of rain from the impervious surface.
So it's a runoff mitigation device?
Right. It allows that first 1.2 inches of rain to be infiltrated into the ground to improve the runoff.
And the downspouts from the roof are directed to that as well?
Yes, sir. And I've overcompensated to cover the driveway by increasing the volume to the ponds, catching the river and putting those into it. So we've got a little bit more than 1.2 that we catch from the house.
I wanted to remind fellow members of board that this is the one where the house proposed, or actually partially built in this house, is very consistent in keeping with the size and dimensions of the other houses in the area for which they supplied a lot of pictures.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments or discussion? I make a motion for do pass. Okay?
I second.
All right. So the motion, as the chair understands it, is to, let me get the number, to approve the variance for item ZBA 13-043 to grant the variance, all those...
With the conditions specified by Mr. Kunt?
With the conditions... With the conditions specified by Mr. Kunt and the staff report with the amendment that the City of Brookhaven Community Development Department be notified once the system is installed, so they can inspect it before it's covered. All right, so all those in favor of the motion signify by raising your hand and saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes unanimously. All right, ZBA 13-044, Kirk and Danielle Sonofell, owners seek the following: a variance to 27-206E to decrease the minimum required rear yard of an R60 lot from 40 feet to 30.75 feet at their property located at 2279 Cusawati Drive. Can we get a staff report on it?
This is a rear yard variance request that will facilitate a remodel and addition on the rear of the home on Cusawati Drive, which is the east side of the property. Currently there is an existing deck, that deck will be demoed and in its place, new construction and an addition of a screened-in porch, and then some additional porch will be built on the north side of that addition. So the reduction required is nine and a quarter feet, which will reduce the rear yard to 30.75 feet. Staff has asked that the application be viewed favorably, and if approved, further suggest the following conditions. Number one, the project is completed in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan documents dated received February 28, 2013, prepared by Paul Lee Consulting Engineering Associates, plans themselves dated September 6, 2006. This approval is also not a blanket rear yard setback variance and only applies to the variance sought within the subject application.
Okay. I'll open up the floors. Sonofell, if you'd like to speak?
Sure.
And I'm sorry if I butchered your last name.
No, he got it. My name is Kurt Sonofell, appreciate the board's time and the staff's recommendation. Yeah, my wife, as Mr. Kunt said, my wife and I are just simply looking to replace our existing deck, which is warped and unfortunately exposed to elements and bugs and like that, and replace it with a screened-in porch consistent with porches with the rest of the neighborhood along that street. You can see within the plan that the current deck is actually beyond the build line, I guess still consistent with DeKalb County's ordinances or historically when it was built. The reasons are go beyond, the current deck line is to make the screened-in porch larger. You can see the little, in the back of the house, the little square, rectangular area in the middle of the house, that's our chimney, chimney actually had, is six feet beyond the house, so in order to use a usable space beyond that, looking to extend the porch and therefore requesting the variance. We've spoken to our immediate neighbors, both along the street and in the rear yard, and did not receive any objections.
Okay. All right, would anyone else like to speak in favor of the application? All right, would anyone like to speak in opposition to the application? All right, I'll close the public portion and open it up for board discussion or a motion.
My only question was, when they, Mr. Sonofell, when you have the screened-in porch built, I noticed that the photo that we have here looks as if your neighbor has a screened-in porch.
Yes.
Is yours going to extend a lot further in the depth of the backyard from neighbors?
It'll extend by, in terms of lining up with that, it would extend four to six feet. The immediate neighbor, actually both neighbors are directly to that way, do not have the chimney issue, and so they have more usable space as they sort of walk out of their house.
So your neighbor on the left on the drawing has a porch that's not shown on that drawing here?
On this particular one, yes.
And they don't have the outside fireplace, so they don't have the chimney that's in the way of their porch area?
That's right, yeah.
Have you spoken to your neighbors on either side?
Yeah, no objections, so they were fine with it, including the folks in the back who were requesting the variance.
Thank you. And one, one last question. This is going to be, there was some discussion in our work group meeting earlier, this is not going to be conditioned space, this is screen porch that you're looking to build there?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. All right, any other discussion from the board? Or motions?
I move to approve.
All right, so the motion, as I understand it, is to approve ZBA case 13-044 with the recommendations, the staff recommendations outlined in our agenda. Okay, so with the, with the conditions outlined in the staff report. So all in favor of the approval of the variance signify by raising your hand and saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on, case ZBA 13-045, Robert Barbieri, representing the Strode Group LLC. Owners seek the following: a variance to 27-146D to decrease the minimum required side yard of an R100 lot from 10 feet to 2.3 feet at a property located at 2688 Osborne Road. If we could get a summary of the staff report?
This request is made to demolish an existing carport and reestablish in its place a garage and a second floor addition on the left side of the home that's located at 2688 Osborne Road. It's an R100 lot, which ordinarily had a 10-foot side yard setback, in this case they're asking for a 2.3-foot side yard setback. The existing condition today substantially matches that setback with the existing construction on the side of the home, so the land use won't change nor should the nonconformity expand very much as a function of the new construction. Staff has recommended that the application be looked upon favorably and further suggest the following conditions. Number one, development of the lot shall occur in substantial accordance with the site plan submitted to the Community Development Department, which is attached to this report, survey itself prepared by Survey Land Express Incorporated, dated January 24, 2013. The granting of this variance is to accomplish the completion of the proposed new home addition depicted in the attached developer plans and is not to be considered a blanket variance pending off future construction on the property.
Okay. Howard, so tell us again, what's the, what is going to be remaining unused setback there? I mean, it's a reduction to 2.?
Yeah, it will, the, the district standard is 10 feet and they want to go down to 2.3 feet, which is, each 10-foot of foot is 1.2 inches.
27 inches or so.
Like 3.6 inches, two, two foot, three.
But that is currently what they currently have for the garage, correct?
With the, with the carport, it's roughly, it's roughly the same, yes.
Okay, so they're not asking for any more than what they have right now?
Correct, the, the land use and the bulk of the building will essentially remain the same following the new construction, if approved, as the, as the existing condition today. There's some photographs that are in your packet and the site plan, a little blurry, but somewhat indicates what exactly is going on.
Okay, all right, Mr. Barbieri, if you'd like to speak?
Yeah, thanks for your consideration. My name is Robert Barbieri with Strode Group, and the intent of the, of the project is to add a second story to the home. Back some 20 years ago, prior to when we purchased it in November, the garage that you'll see in your packet was added to the home and is a nonconforming structure, it's a good eight feet beyond the line, so we're not looking for anything additional, we're just actually looking to go straight up. What's not depicted on the diagram is that we're looking to bring the addition of the garage forward, so this is the existing garage, we're looking to bring it just forward to match the house. There'll be an addition of about 1,500 square feet. We did look at some alternative designs and when we looked at those designs, it was going to basically cause us to demolish the house, which is not really the intent of the company that I own. We really like to just refurbish houses, we like to keep, especially a 1940's home, really don't want to take it down, so to avoid a lot of unnecessary land disturbances, a lot of very large heritage trees on the property, that would be, that could potentially have some root damage, so the best possible solution for this renovation would be just to add the garage to it and go straight up. We did look at some rear yard options as well, but because of the heritage trees, again, decided not to do that. I did contact the neighbors to the left, to the left side of the property or the east side, is a townhome project. I contacted the president of the association and he and the board went over the diagrams for the improvement and they had no objection to it. I've got a letter, or I should say an email, from the right neighbor approving it as well. Would you like a copy of that?
Sure.
Sure. Thank you. Any questions for you? No, just have an old thing. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the application? All right, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the application? Okay, go ahead and close the public comments section and open it up for board discussion or a motion.
I propose we adopt the board's ready. The staff recommendation approved the variance.
You have a second?
Second.
All right, so the motion, as I understand it, is to approve ZBA 13-045 and amend it with the staff, the two staff recommendations in the staff report. All those in favor of the approval signify by raising your hand and saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Reiner Reitig, representing HSC In-Town LLC, owners located at 6650 Sugarloaf Parkway Suite 200, Duluth, Georgia, seeks the following: a variance to 27-788A to allow for an average required front yard reduction of 8.06 feet from 45.56 feet to 37.5 feet at a property located at 2684 North Thompson Road. Can we get a summary of the staff report?
Certainly, this is the first of two variances on tonight's agenda related to this property. This first one is for a reduction in an average front yard setback. The average front yard setback for this property is 45.56 feet, even though the district standard is 35 feet. The applicant would like to reduce that not to the district standard, but to 37.5 feet to fit a proposed home on the lot as indicated on the site plan that was submitted in the application materials. Staff recommends the board view the application favorably, and if the application is approved tonight, we further suggest the following condition. Development of the lot shall occur in substantial accordance with the site plan submitted to the Community Development Department, which is attached to this report, prepared by BHND Engineering Incorporated, dated November 12, 2012. The granting of this variance is to accomplish the completion of the proposed new home depicted in the attached development plans and is not to be considered a blanket variance pending off future construction on the property.
All right, we'll go ahead and open up the floor for comments in favor of the application, if the applicant would like to come forward, please.
My name's Mike Phelps. I'm the owner of the property. Reiner had some family situations come up, so I relieved him of it to see. It's pretty much just like it's drawn, we're requesting a variance on the front. It's a little bit of an odd-shaped lot, and the house plan that we have proposed for would not quite fit, and we're trying to stay in consistency with the back of the other house that's to the south right now, but we were having to pull the house forward because of the tuck-thru in the backyard and because of the pinch down on that right side of the property line.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the application? Would anyone like to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward.
Hi, Jerry Mills. I own it's about 1,000 feet from this house on Valveter Drive, just around the corner, and absolutely do not think this meets your criteria in terms of the hardship. This property is not particularly irregularly shaped, as was represented to you a moment ago. Very familiar, I've lived in this neighborhood for over 30 years. This is basically a standard lot, the bumpers have bought it, bulldozed the property, and now come and ask for its only waiver. There's no hardship here. The zoning requirements were in place when this property was purchased. It's not as if the homeowner's trying to stretch a porch or anything else, and respectfully ask that you deny this approval does not, absolutely does not meet your criteria. If there's a hardship, it exists on Sugarloaf, not in Duluth.
Would anyone else like to speak in opposition to the application?
Hi, I'm Kelly Parker, my wife Jennifer is the homeowner. We're, but we own the house in the south. I'm, I'm objecting a number of different reasons. If you notice on the house, on the, my garage, which would be the house, would be the, down here on the bottom, this garage comes back 10 feet from the front of this house. So I have a number of pictures that show that when you slide the neighbor house another eight feet closer to the street, it substantially changes the way that my lot looks. Now, I'm not going to tell you that my house isn't big, it is, and it does look funny on that lot. I know that, but I want to show you a couple of pictures. This is the lot we're talking about. It's substantially smaller than mine, mine's number 19, number 20 is the one we're talking about. It's quite a bit shorter, 19 is mine, 20 is there. I also want to show you a picture from my garage. If you notice, my garage being back 10 feet, there is, there is a tree that I will show in another picture that's on my lot. That tree is where the edge of their house is. My garage is 10, my garage is 10 feet back from the setback, so if you go 10 feet up...
Yes, sir.
And then go another eight feet up, it's almost at the edge of that tree. So it's a substantial chunk that I would be looking at of that house.
That tree is of my, my tree. And this, no house there is existing.
I want to also show you a picture of the street. My house is the, the big one on top, but they are all in line. So I'm not going to tell you that my house isn't going to look funny already, it does stick out, but if you have another house on top of the hill, my house isn't even on the top of that hill. My house is the big one there. You stick another house on the top of that hill, I want to show you in the next picture what that street will look like, my house will be wiped out from view coming the other direction. My house will be wiped out from view coming the other direction. You wouldn't see my house coming from the north. Just coming from, going toward, going south. All of that view would be gone. And I showed you my picture. My house is pretty This is coming the other direction. There's that tree.
No problem. This lot is higher.
Yeah. This house, this lot is higher than mine. My house is up near. I, I respect development. I love the fact that they are putting a new house next to mine. That's great for me. But I do think it's going a little bit too far forward than it needs to be. And I just would respectfully ask that you deny. Thank you.
Excuse me, while are you there? What's the backyard of yours?
I was going to say the backyard discussion for the next item, but the backyard does, my backyard goes back substantially farther than theirs. Excuse me. This is where their lot ends. Mine goes back another, probably back here.
Okay. He had indicated the drop sign, and I don't want to get the two confused, but they are related.
Oh, well, this, this lot is the Velvetir lot. This, this lot is for this house on Velvetir. My lot goes back.
I understand that, but does it...
No.
Elevation wise, does it go down?
A little bit. Creek, creek is way back over here. It goes back a little way. It, it goes a little bit in this lot. My lot is not really either. Really, the drop off happens past both of our property lines.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak in opposition to the application? Do you like to speak? I think you've got 90 minutes left.
Yeah, let me, I want to show one thing to make sure that they realize that. I know we're still going to be sitting back a little bit further than what his home is, but the eight foot variance is mostly garage here. This portion of the house sits back another two to three foot down the garage. So the 37.88 feet is to the front of the garage, which we put to the left side, the high side of the lot, to try to get the front offset on the house as it steps back. And this is covered porch right here. So this would be the closest. And I would be saying that this is, from this point, from this point, yes, sorry, from this point to the street is a little over 40 feet. So 37 foot is to the front edge of the garage.
You have another point you want to make? Do we have any time left in the opposition?
We have about a minute.
Okay.
Minutes, great. I don't really care if it's a garage or a chicken house on the front. Ashford Park has been continually eroded over the last few years. We've owned a home there since 1976, and I would oppose any development that violates the front setbacks in this neighborhood. It is ugly, destroys property of the existing homeowners. And like I said, I don't really care if it's a garage or a disney lot. I would be opposed to it.
Alright. Since how we have no more comments, I will go ahead and close the public portion of this case and open it up to the board for discussion or motion.
The average, what are we looking at in the neighborhood?
I believe the average here is 45.56, and they want to reduce it down to 37.5. The, the underlying zoning would require a 35 foot setback, but the, the averaging overrides that in this, in this area.
Thank you.
Another question for the owner. Is it, if we considered more setback relief in the rear, could we push it back a little bit more, do the same, the same product?
Yes, sir.
Yes, that's a yes?
Yes, sir.
At that point, though, I believe we're looking at a side yard setback as well. Because you think that...
Well, the dotted lines, isn't that the, the perimeter of sort of the buildable area? Is that my, my understanding?
That, that is correct.
Yeah, so...
The 40 foot rear building line you can see there.
Jim, that's why.
And then the, the 45 foot line you can see goes into the garage. These are very modest setback relief requests compared to some of the ones we hear. I, I think that, my, my personal opinion is the, the shape of the lot being irregular does, does create a hardship in this, in this case, because the buildable area of the property is, is diminished by the fact that the rear property line is, is much smaller than the front property line. So the lot does choke down as it gets further back. Do I hear motion? We're talking about inches here. The question to the applicant about moving it back a little bit, you know, reducing the front setback variance a little bit and increasing the back a little bit, sounds like it would be less objection. Would that be something you might...
I, I hesitate to mess with your procedure, but it, the front is the big issue for me. So it depends on what your, what your vote is for the front. I would be much more willing to talk about the back, but if we're going to just hurt the front, then there's really no sense to talk about the back. Because the front is what concerns me. There is a great deal of space in the back that we can go back more. And I've got pictures for that, too. We can talk about that in a minute.
Howard has a, is there a way to amend?
I agree. I agree. It's the front. I don't want to disturb the, the viewer. I don't want to disturb our neighborhood, and this would be ugly. But if you want to move it back, I have no problem whatsoever.
The ordinance does permit you to grant less than the request than what's made, but you cannot grant more than a request that's made.
You can't increase the...
The rear yard setback that's coming up in the next issue. Currently, the, the next agenda item is for a five yard rear yard setback. You are not entitled to grant eight feet to the rear yard.
But we could defer that one.
Well, it would, it would have to be properly advertised.
So it would have to be a re-application for them to...
If you were to withdraw the rear yard request without prejudice and then reapply with the increased rear yard, and I think it's right, if he's going to try and set that house on that lot, he's, he's at the pinch point in the rear where the width of that home to fit inside the side yard setbacks, it's, it's as far to the west as it can go currently, without encroaching both the rear and the sides. Currently, it's only encroaching the rear. So it would be a wholly different request.
You'd have to miter the corner of the house or something like that.
You'd have to work that out, yeah.
There have been, I, I don't want to mess with the procedure. There have been other houses with, with a corner lot where they've combined lots together and built three houses on a, on an adjacent lot, a block away. That seemed to work pretty well. And I can show you the picture of how these three lots that are sitting there, and they're all older homes and they're irregular. You're right. But there is a way to work around it. It's when you try to put one lot without consideration of the ones around it, it gets difficult. I agree with you. But it has been done in Ashford Park, and the front setback has been
Does anybody else on the board have a feeling that maybe we do a little compromise zoning here and we grant a, a reduced front setback?
I'm inclined to agree.
I don't think that's going to solve anything.
I'd be inclined, Jim, I'd be inclined to ask them to try to talk amongst themselves and see if they can't come up with something. I would be inclined to, to ask them to go back and, and see if there's not some agreement that you two can reach before we kind of vote and put some sort of constraint on them that it may turn out that he's not prepared to abide by.
Essentially, you're looking at a too much probably deferral to, if he wanted to pull and reapply, you know, by pushing the house back.
That wouldn't be a hardship on me, but I'm confused why it's 60 days.
Mr. Chairman, just to point out...
It's a technical problem that the second application can't, we can't...
I understand, I understand that.
Point of order, please.
I apologize, I'm sorry.
The, so there is no provision for an amendment to an application?
Not to amend it for a greater request than what was made. You can amend something to a lesser request than what was made.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, what was the comment that you were going to make that you didn't think that if we gave the relief on the front, you said that it wouldn't be helpful?
I'm saying we're not going to be able to make any resolution to this, because we can, we can reduce the front, but we can't do anything to the rear. We can't afford more relief in the rear than what's been requested.
Without them agreeing.
This, this house has not been started or anything, has it?
Is the property under contract or is the property under contract? Is there a contingency on zoning or?
I have, I have potential buyer, but I wasn't planning anything until we got this.
I see. Is asking for a couple, 60 days, is that going to be a problem for you? You might not hit your zoning, but...
Well, I, I want to try to explain this a little more detail. One of the reasons we held off, because we attempted to plot for a, a variance in DeKalb County, but we definitely wanted to deal with Brookhaven. And, and that's one of the reasons we did do the five, basically the five in the rear and the front, because we knew we were going to get pinched on that sideline. And instead of trying to get two variances before it's over with, we're going to end up trying to get three variances. So we took what we thought was the lesser of the three eagles. And this, this is the proposed home for the buyer. This is the same particular home I've built in the Ashford Park area four times now, scattered throughout the area. And I mean, if, at this point, and I'm not trying to be adamant, if we're going to reduce the front setback or reduce what I'm asking for, I'm going to have to go back to the drawing table anyway and sit down and rework a new plan. So it's, it's either this and then, or whatever y'all decide that we can have.
Does, does the existing neighbor or, or the existing house, do, do they have an opinion about your plan? They're not here.
Yeah, that's... I'm, I'm not going to really say on that. We talked to them. They've approached us about buying that property and...
I see.
I was just going to hold off until we get this one resolved.
Any, any more discussion on the board or someone would like to present a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we deny the request based on that, a couple different, well, or a couple different reasons. One, Mr. Phelps is it?
Yes.
The comment you just made that the, the property owners just to the north have approached you about buying their property is somewhat intriguing to me. Goes to Mr. Parker's comment that if you do have multiple lots and you could look at a combination of those lots and work out that, that side variance. Seems to me you could solve your own issue there with the side, side lot variance.
Yeah, by changing the property line, yeah?
Right.
By buying another...
Well, he's already talking about it. If, if you're already talking about it, and if you're going to say, no, we're not going to do that, let's, you know. But I was already inclined to, to move to deny it solely based on, I don't think you truly have a hardship other than to build that particular home. I understand you built four of those homes. You could build another home on that lot.
Oh, yeah. I could build a much smaller house.
Or a differently shaped house.
Alright. Is there a second to Mr. Phelps' motion? I do not hear a second. Do I hear any other motions?
I'm going to make a motion that we exact, we split the baby. Instead of giving the eight foot variance, we give a four foot variance on this one, and then we consider the subsequent motion on the back end.
I'll second that. Alright. Alright, so the motion, as I understand it, is to reduce the variance to four feet that we would be granting. I'll go ahead and open up the floor on the board for discussion like that. Do we have any comments or discussion about reducing that front variance?
Yeah, I guess I go back to our earlier comment, Mr. Chairman. What does that solve? Mr. Phelps has already said he will have to go back to the drawing board in that situation. I don't know if that helps the, the opposition at all to reduce it by four feet, but if, if the applicant already has to go back to the drawing board, I don't see the benefit.
Okay. Any other discussion? One benefit is it's just, it becomes a design issue.
Well, my question is for the folks who are opposed. How would you feel about that?
I, I want to save the rear discussions for when we're talking about that zoning, but I, and I, I understand your point about the differences in the back, but really, there is, there is a way to make that work with that, with, and still respect the front of my property and respect the front of a number of properties.
Are you agreeable to a four foot?
I, I don't mean disrespect to the builder. I just don't, I, I, it's still, my side of that house, I'm going to be looking at more than four feet. I'm going to be looking at a great deal of house on the north side of my property. And if four feet doesn't, doesn't make enough of a difference for me. No disrespect.
I'll go back to the same comment that I made earlier, that, you know, part of, part of what we're tasked to do is to grant variances based on, based on conditions. And I, I think that due to the shape of, the irregular shape of the lot, that there does need to be some sort of exception made for this. And if, you know, if the rest of the board feels like four feet is adequate, then, but I, I just think that there, there needs to be some sort of compromise on this, because there, there is a hardship on this property, in my opinion, the way that I read what we're tasked to do.
I agree. I think there's a hardship. My, my only concern about supporting the motion, I, I don't know whether four feet works for you. I don't know, and it doesn't work for you. And so if we're going to take a vote on something that we know doesn't work for one and might work for the other, I don't know that we've really done anything. I'd almost prefer for us to punt on it, and I don't like using that expression, give you some time, and with, with an understanding that some of us feel that there's a hardship here that this gentleman's got, and that I, for one, would be inclined to provide him with relief on the back end, even though we're not discussing that, if that is a way for us to kind of facilitate his development and the, the changes in the neighborhood. Yes, sir.
At this point, with the time that we've been working on this deal, I'm willing, I'm willing to take the four feet if we can work out the back situation. We'll, we'll make something work with that boundary. I'll have to do modification to this house slightly, but you're talking about, you know, a four foot modification on the garage side, basically.
But I don't think that we'll be able to give you what you need tonight, I think is the problem with regards to the relief on the back side, because we can't give any...
No, I'm saying, the way the back is now, that what we're requesting on the back...
Yes, sir.
If that...
If that were granted, you could live with the four feet?
Yes, sir.
But I don't know that that solves the...
I, I don't mean disrespect. I would be more willing to give more, another four more feet to the back. And I don't mean to mess with your...
Point of order, point of order.
Sorry.
Alright, any more discussion about the motion on the floor, which is to grant a four foot reduction in the front setback variance? Alright. Hearing no other discussion, I will, I will call for a vote. The, the motion, as I understand it, is to grant a... motion, as I understand it, is to grant a reduction in the front setback of four feet in the average required front yard setback, four feet. To forty-one point five, sir. To forty, is that right? To forty-one point?
Thirty-three point five.
What's that? From forty-five point five six to thirty-seven point five, therefore thirty-three point
five.
No, that's the other direction. Right, the other direction.
Sorry.
Okay. All right. So the, the new, the front yard, the new front yard setback that the motion is proposing is forty-one point five six feet, uh, from the front property. All right. All right. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right. The motion passes, uh, six to one. All right. Moving on, case ZBA one three dash zero four seven. Um, how about we just say, Mr. Phelps here, representing HSC In-Town LLC, owners located at six six five zero Sugar Loaf Parkway, Suite 200 Duluth, Georgia, seeks the following: A variance to twenty-seven dash one eight six E to allow for a required rear yard reduction of five feet from forty feet to thirty-five feet at a property located at two six eight four North Thompson Road. Give a summary of the staff recommendation.
This is the request related to the same property as the previous case. This request is for the rear yard. The district standard is forty foot rear yard in the R75 zoning district. The request is to reduce that by five feet to thirty-five feet for the rear yard, um, to be able to place the home that was drawn on the submitted site plan on the subject lot. Um, staff has requested that the, the board view the application favorably. And if you were to approve the request, we further suggest the following condition: Development of the lot shall occur in substantial accordance with the site plan submitted to the community development department attached to this report. And number two, the granting of this variance is to accomplish the completion of the proposed new home depicted in the attached development plans, not to be considered a blanket rear yard variance to any and all future construction on the property.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Phelps, anything you'd like to add for your next case?
Uh, I, as you can see, it's the back right corner. Um, it's a very small piece, even though we're just asking for a straight across, but we're going to try to draw in an angle there. Um, I think it represents everything that we're trying to do right there. Um, other than that, I can answer any questions.
Okay. Anyone else would like to speak in favor of the application? Anyone like to speak in opposition to the application?
Please. Just a short one.
All right.
I pictured back here. It, it, um, I remind you that the lot is smaller. We're talking about number twenty, not number nineteen, which is going to change the way that the property fits. The backyard is, does not have slope. There is no hardship as far as, that's my backyard. You can see it's relatively level next door. The other side of the fence is a big property. There's the back of my house. So you guys, plenty of room to come back. That tree is approximately where the property line would be. So there is a fence area in the backyard. If you could go back farther, but I know we're not talking about that. I am disappointed that we couldn't delay motion, but too late for that. Tried to respect the procedure by talking about backyard at the time. There's, there's a property in the property line, so there's lots of stuff.
Let's see the, the first map.
Number nineteen, is it? Twenty.
Is your house in the basement?
Yes, it is.
And do you have a rear daylight basement?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And you can see.
So it does, but it does slope to the back.
But it does, it slopes the other direction. My, my fence is relatively straight going back on his.
Right. I was just looking at it from the 3D view. That's the back of your house, right?
Yeah.
So it is sloping back that direction. Okay.
It's not.
Okay. Right. Now, it didn't look like a huge drop off. All right. Anyone else like to speak in opposition to the application? All right. I'll go ahead and close the public comment and open it up to the board for discussion. I'm just going to go ahead and make the motion to approve this application as stated with the Howard Kuntz, um, adjustments at the back of the staff report.
I second.
All right. The motion on the floor is to approve, uh, ZBA one three dash zero four seven. Any discussion amongst the board?
Yes, I'd like to ask, uh, Mr. Phelps, it's my understanding that the, one of the conditions, I believe the second condition in the staff's recommendation is the, um, the home depicted here is what would have to be built. Can that home be built with only a four foot variance on the front end if we, if we were to grant the five foot variance on the back end? Can that actual home be built on that?
Less the garage four foot. So no, that, that actual footprint that you see right there is our floor plan for this house, but no, based on that, I've got to rework the front garage four foot back. But other than that, um, it's going to end up resetting. I'll show you. I have this plan drawn. This plan has two options. You have a two car and then you have a tandem three car garage here. So what we're probably going to do is reworking this part of the house right here, so that we have a deep garage here and a shorter shallow one on this side.
Well, I think it's fair to say then that I'd like to modify my motion to not be so restrictive on the site plan condition to allow him to make such modifications that will be consistent with the first variance that we modified. Okay. All right. Any other discussion, uh, about the motion on the floor? All right. So the motion on the floor is to approve ZBA one three dash zero four seven based on the, uh, staff recommendations outlined in our report, uh, but also with the knowledge that there will have to be some modifications to the, the plan shown, uh, in order to rework the garage for the front, front setback variance. All those in favor of the motion, signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. The motion passes, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Have y'all had a chance to meet? Okay. Um, I guess let's, uh, let's go back to case ZBA one three dash zero four two, Sean Cash. Um, Mr. Cash, if you'd like to speak for a second?
Yes, uh, we, we did discuss the, uh, project and we'd like to respectfully request a deferral until we further discuss this. And, um, when, when the, when the property was gets back from the body, we'd like to speak directly with him and get, get it worked out.
Okay. All right. I move to defer thirty minutes. I'll second. All right. The motion on the floor, as I understand it, is to defer ZBA one three dash zero four two for, uh, until our next regularly scheduled meeting, which would be May fifteenth?
It would be, they said to you, right? Wednesday, May the fifteenth.
Okay. To Wednesday, May the fifteenth. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passed. Thank you very much. Two minute recess, please. All right. Took a two minute recess, so, uh, Mr. Baird looking to accuse himself properly. All right. Let's, uh, let's go ahead and get the meeting started back. Uh, the next item on the agenda is ZBA one three dash zero four eight. Michael Phelps, representing EPS Heritage Investments LLC, owners located at six three seven Woods Drive Northwest, Atlanta, Georgia, three zero three one eight, seeks the following: A variance to two six dash one six eight to allow for a reduction in required lot area, a reduction of required lot width, a reduction of required front yard adjacent to a street, a reduction of required side yard adjacent to a street, a reduction of required rear yard, a reduction of a required interior side yard, and an exemption from the provision for additional lot width for a corner lot found at one four dash two five seven at one two five eight Windsor Parkway. Would you get a summary of the staff report?
Sure. This is the first case, um, of four that are all interrelated. On tonight's agenda, it's items E eight through E eleven, and they all relate to the same four properties that are bounded by Windsor Parkway, Kate's Avenue, and Antioch Drive. Currently, there are four lots, um, that are encompassed by those three streets. The applicant has come forward with a proposal to realign the lot lines to create four differently shaped lots for the purpose of, uh, constructing four new single-family homes, considering with the site plan that you got in your packets. Um, the, the first item relates to, um, twelve fifty-eight Windsor Parkway, and it is to reduce, uh, excuse me, it's, it's a variance to a number of development standards to allow the idea of the, uh, home that they have proposed for the lot to be constructed, um, on the substandard lot located in this R75 zoning district. Uh, the staff has done an exhaustive analysis of this project, and our recommendation to the board is to view this app, this application and the subsequent applications actually favorably. And if it were to be approved, we would further suggest the following conditions. Number one, development of the required subdivision plaque and subsequent building plans shall occur in substantial accordance with the site plan submitted to the community development department dated received April fifth, 2013, attached to this report, prepared by Land Development Surveyors Incorporated. The date on the plan is actually February twenty-seventh, 2013. Number two, the granting of this variance is to accomplish the completion of the proposed new home subdivision project depicted on the attached development plans, and is not to be considered a blanket variance to any and all future construction on the properties.
Okay. Uh, I'll go ahead and open the, uh, public comments section of the medium, and if the applicant would like to speak first, please go ahead.
I'm Michael Phelps. I'm representing EPS Heritage Investment Group. Um, I have the property currently under contract, uh, pending these, getting these variances. Um, if you look at, I don't know if you have a copy of the original lot layout, um, that we're originally working with, but, um, they're all originally non-conforming R75 lots. None of them met the square footage, the width, or the, um, for the, I think not depth, but square footage. Um, and then lots one and three on the original plaque were unbillable due to the fact that the side yards on them, um, took up the whole forty foot. You had a twenty, I think it was a twenty-five foot side yard setback off the road, which took out slot one and three, which gave you five foot to build a house on. So we went back to the drawing board and, um, we, we laid the lots out to try to maximize our, um, well, to maximize getting them close to conforming, conforming R75 lots so good. Um, putting the two front lots that are facing Windsor Parkway at seventy-three foot wide. And our proposal was to do side entry garages off the two side streets to keep three houses originally front loading on Windsor Parkway, keeping traffic down. And then, um, our lots three and four, we made those, um, we faced those the same way as every other house along, Kate's Avenue is currently there. And those are all, um, we originally had them flipped the other way and flipped them the same way as every other house on there to try to conform with the neighbors that are, um, down the street. And then, um, to try to also get the maximum, uh, lot coverage, we could, we had to, on lots one and two, we had to, um, hit the setbacks from thirty feet building lines to, um, twenty foot building lines to try to get a maximum width out of these lots. And, um, I think it's pretty, uh, self-explanable where we've gone from the original layout. So if you have any questions, answer.
All right. Is there any, uh, one else that would like to speak in favor of the application? All right. Would anyone like to speak in opposition to the application?
No, in favor.
I'm sorry. In favor?
Sure.
If you have to speak in favor, please.
I don't have much to say, but, uh.
Please give us your name first.
Free Mel.
Okay.
I don't have much to say, but, uh, I'm in favor of what they're trying to do, get rid of the property. So I have an hour to account.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the application? All right. But is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the application? All right. Seeing as how we have no, uh, no one else who wants to speak on the application, I'll close the public comment and open it up to the board for discussion or entertain a motion. I'll start the discussion. Um, while this seems like a, a large number of variances, I think that we're basically taking four parcels and just configuring them in different ways. We're not adding another parcel to the, um, to the equation here. It's not a matter of someone with, you know, three lots trying to get four out of it. I think we've got four parcels here, and what we would end up with are four parcels that would, uh, I think be more attractive and fit in with the neighborhood a little bit better, in my opinion.
My only comment, Mr. Chairman, is what we discussed earlier, which is that, um, I know this is a transforming neighborhood. It's literally my backyard. And, um, what I know that's going to be a concern to the constituency is adding more homes in our area and increasing the traffic load on Windsor Parkway. But to your point, we are not increasing the density should this be approved, because it's already zoned for four parcels. And I think that, um, you know, it probably makes more sense, even though there are a large number of variances, to consider those as opposed to trying to rezone this area, which I think could be potentially detrimental to the neighborhood in years down the road.
Any other board discussion?
Mr. Phelps, the, I believe you indicated the original plan called for a side entry garage. Is that?
These, these two, lots one and two are both going to be side entry garages coming off of, um, Kate's and Antioch.
So it's not a change to a plan?
No, that's, that's, that's the current plan that we're doing.
Okay. Um, one, one question for staff here. Is this, uh, this particular one of the four that we're hearing, is this tied to one of these particular, lot two? Lot two. Okay. Just wanted to make sure. All right. Any other discussion, or I'll entertain a motion?
My only other question was with regard to the trees. There's a large number of trees on those plats. I think about, at least, I think I counted maybe forty.
Yeah, so what we've done with DeKalb County and, um, I guess with the state of Brookhaven, uh, I guess certain trees are, um, are, uh, trees that need to be replaced with tree banking or whatnot. So when, I guess when we get into submitting our plans and deciding what trees have to come out, I guess that's when we decide, y'all decide how many we have to bank and give back or plant back on the property. Um, I know there's going to be, uh, quite a few, I think there's a lot of pine trees on the lot. Um, but I, it's over a certain diameter, I think, so I consider it a specimen tree. So, um, that would just be whenever we submit our plans and start building, I guess we don't decide how many, how many we need to plant or what we need to do or what we can't take out, so.
I think those would be addressed on the individual building permit.
Mr. Epps, I'll have to tell you that, um, I enjoy the Christmas lights that are wrapped around some of those trees, but it's hell of a sight. It's a joy.
All right. Would anybody like to, uh, make a motion? Make a motion, do pass. Okay. All right. So as I understand, the motion is to grant the variances requested in ZBA one three dash zero four eight, uh, based upon the staff rec, the two staff recommendations included in our report. All those in favor of the All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. The motion passes unanimously. Moving on. ZBA one-three dash zero-four-nine. Michael Phelps, representing EPS Heritage Investments LLC, owners located at six-three-seven Woods Drive Northwest, Atlanta, Georgia, three-zero-three-one-eight. Seeks the following: A variance to twenty-seven dash one-eight-six to allow for a reduction in required lot area, a reduction of required lot width, a reduction of a required front yard adjacent to a street, a reduction of a required rear yard, and a reduction of a required interior side yard at one-two-five-four Windsor Parkway. Can you get a brief summary of the staff report?
Again, this, uh, second of four items related to the same project actually relates to lot three, which will front on Kate's Avenue, and, um, the variances requested are to complete the project as it is, uh, as it is drawn on the site plan that's been submitted. This is the, the second of four lots on the project, which currently consists of four lots. The staff has rec- excuse me, the staff has recommended that you view the application favorably, and further suggest the following conditions. Development of the required subdivision plat and the subsequent building plans shall occur in substantial accordance with the site plan submitted to the Community Development Department, received April fifth, twenty thirteen, attached to this report, prepared by Land Development Surveyors Incorporated, dated February twenty-seventh, twenty thirteen. Condition two is lot three, which is this lot in question, shall be required to include a ten-foot no-access easement along the Antioch Road property frontage to preclude, excuse me, preclude a through lot, which is prohibited by code. The required no-access easement shall be included on the recorded subdivision plat. Number three, the granting of this variance is to accomplish the completion of the proposed new home subdivision project depicted in the attached development plans, and is not to be considered a blanket variance to any and all future construction on the property.
All right. I will open it up to public comment. Anyone like to speak in favor of the application?
Uh, just going to explain the no-access easement, the way they, uh, go through with, um, the no-access easement's going to go through the backs of lots three and four, and it's just, um, there's no, uh, there's no room for lining a lot around street to street, so we had to input the no-access easement to keep it from being a through lot, although, um, some of the lots on the street were, I think there were already three, pre- uh, site plan that was, so, um, that's just the only thing that I can comment on those two lots.
Anyone else to speak in favor of the application? You still for this one, Mr. Epps? Okay. All right. Anyone like to speak in opposition to the application? All right. I'll close the public comment, open it up to the board for discussion or a motion.
I move to approve.
All right.
Second.
Very second. All right. So the motion on the floor is the approval of ZBA one-three dash zero-four-nine, uh, with the three recommendations of staff attached to that. All those in favor of the motion, uh, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Next item, ZBA one-three dash zero-four-A. Michael Phelps, representing EPS Heritage Investments LLC, owners located at six-three-seven Woods Drive Northwest, Atlanta, Georgia, three-zero-three-one-eight. Seeks the following: A variance to twenty-seven dash one-eight-six to allow for a reduction in required lot area, a reduction of required lot width, a reduction of a required front yard adjacent to a street, a reduction of a required side yard adjacent to a street, a reduction of a required rear yard, a reduction of a required interior side yard, and an exemption from the provision for additional lot width for a corner lot found in fourteen dash two-five-seven at one-two-five-zero Windsor Parkway. Brief summary of the staff report.
Thank you. This is the third of four requests to complete the project. Uh, you have a host of variances required to complete, um, lot one, which actually refers to the lot that's in the southwest corner of the development property. Um, the variances required are for setbacks, um, and, and also, as it's a corner lot, the code requires you have an extra fifteen feet of width, uh, for future right-of-way improvements if they're required. In this instance, that would be very... The staff has recommended that the application be viewed favorably. We further suggest the following conditions. Number one, development of the required subdivision plat and subsequent building plans shall occur in substantial accordance with the site plan submitted to the Community Development Department dated received April fifth, twenty thirteen, attached to this report, prepared by Land Dev- Development Surveyors Incorporated dated February twenty-seventh, twenty thirteen. Number two, the granting of this variance is to accomplish the completion of the proposed new home subdivision project depicted in the attached development plans, and is not to be considered a blanket variance to any and all future construction on the property.
All right. I'll open up public comment. Anyone like to speak in favor of the application? Anyone like to speak in opposition to the application? All right. I will close the public comments section, open it up to the board for discussion or a motion. Motion for do pass?
I'll second.
All right. Your motion's been seconded. Uh, this is for approval of ZBA item one-three dash zero-four-A, uh, to approve the variance with the conditions in the staff report, uh, the two recommendations in the report. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Last item, ZBA one-three dash zero-four-B. Michael Phelps, representing EPS Heritage Investments LLC, owners located at six-three-seven Woods Drive Northwest, Atlanta, Georgia, three-zero-three-one-eight. Seeks the following: A variance to twenty-seven dash one-eight-six to allow for a reduction in required lot area, a reduction of required lot width, a reduction of a required front yard adjacent to a street, and a reduction of a required interior side yard at three-one-seven-eight Kate's Avenue. Brief summary of the staff report.
The last of four requests, um, this is actually related to lot four, the northernmost lot, uh, for the project, uh, the variances requested are to complete the project as is indicated on that site plan to place the home footprint as you see it on lot four. Uh, it will take access from Kate's Avenue. It should be required to have a ten-foot no-access easement, uh, that fronts Antioch Drive to preclude the idea that it be treated as a through lot. Staff has recommended, uh, the application be viewed favorably with the following three conditions if it were to be approved by the board. Number one, development of the required subdivision plat and subsequent plans, subsequent building plan shall occur in substantial accordance with the site plan submitted to the Community Development Department dated received April fifth, twenty thirteen, attached to this report, prepared by Land Development Surveyors Incorporated dated February twenty-seventh, twenty thirteen. Lot four, which is the lot in question, shall be required to include a ten-foot no-access easement along the Antioch Road property frontage to preclude a through lot, which is prohibited by code. The required no-access easement shall be included on the recorded subdivision plat. Number three, the granting of this variance is to accomplish the completion of the proposed new home subdivision project depicted in the attached development plans, and is not to be considered a blanket variance to any and all future construction on the property.
All right. We'll open it up for public comment. Anyone like to speak in favor of the application? Anyone like to speak in opposition to the application? Close the public comment for board discussion or entertain a motion. I move to pass.
A second.
All right. Motion is for approval of ZBA one-three dash zero-four-B, uh, the approval of the variance based upon the three recommendations contained in the staff report. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. This is our last item, um, and the, uh, our last business item of the evening is, uh, public comment. If anyone has anything that they would like to say to address the... I'm reading off an old agenda. It's me, it's Jerry.